Good evening, everybody. For the record, it's 5:15 PM on Thursday, June 23rd. Time for the regular meeting of Wenatchee City Council. First item today would be the pledge to our flag. We were going left to right and everybody left us, so... Who did last time?
I did.
You did?
I can do it again.
No, we'll have Linda do it this time.
It would be honored.
Linda will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Harold.
You're welcome.
A roll call this evening. We have four councilmembers here. Three are at AWC. In fact, we saw them all today. So Jim Bailey and Lyle and Ruth are representing the city at the Association of Washington Cities meeting tonight, so we do have a quorum of four. First item tonight would be the consent items, which would be this evening's agenda, vouchers, and amendments to the previous meeting.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve the agenda, vouchers, and amendments from the previous meetings as noted.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker. Second by Councilmember Poyer to adopt tonight's consent items, including the agenda, vouchers, and minutes. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Citizen comment. This would be a time when any member of the audience could address the city council on any item on this evening's agenda or anything else. Seeing no takers. We have no presentations tonight, so we have action items. First action item is regarding the city attorney services. Allison?
Yes, that's Linda. Linda.
Good evening, Allison Williams, Executive Services Director. The first item I have for you, you requested at your last meeting, Resolution 2016-31. And due to the nature of our indigent defense legal contract where we've had to have so many additions of conflict attorneys for specific cases, this resolution would delegate the authority to the mayor to approve those contracts on behalf of the city council. So as requested at your last regular meeting, and we would ask for your approval.
Stevie, tertiary mean?
Third level.
Third level, thank you.
You don't very often get to use a word like that.
So you knew what it was?
Very happy.
Was that a law school question or something? You knew it on the bar exam or what?
Hopped right into my head.
Actually, I believe Mr. Leonard uses it, but it's in relationship to the water pollution control plan.
Okay.
And they use it in scales.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions for staff? If not, I would entertain a motion.
The only thing, just for the record, that we wanted to clarify is, I mean, this isn't just a blanket
Right.
thing. It's you're still going to approve them and
Yep.
it just means that we don't have to bring it in front of the whole council
Right.
and go through this whole procedure every time and have him have to write it up. So it's a cost-saving thing.
Hopefully, we have less of these things. And we just went out for requests for proposals for the next indigent defense contract. And maybe with a number of firms, if they come up, we won't keep having these conflicts. But it just seems like, and some of it has to do with the nature of the criminals, I think, and who they've been defended by in the past. And I mean, there's just lots that goes into that, so...
Exactly.
Thank you.
Okay. So I don't think we have a motion yet, do we?
No, Your Honor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 2016-31, delegating authority to the mayor to approve
Tertiary.
Tertiary contracts on behalf of the city council for the city of Wenatchee for indigent legal defense service for conflict attorneys.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Harold. Second by Councilmember Huffaker to adopt Resolution 2016-31, delegating authority to the mayor to approve tertiary contracts for criminal defense. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Allison. Next item is regarding medical marijuana cooperatives moratorium. Steve King, Steve Smith, Steve Crown, any other Steves in the room want to come up?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Steve King, Community and Economic Development Director. Tonight, we're requesting the council adopt ordinance 2016-13 to enact a six-month moratorium on medical marijuana cooperatives, which is a law that's coming in effect on July 1st, where four people can get together, four qualifying individuals can get together and grow 60 plants each. So you could have up to 240 plants in one location. And we don't know that that's appropriate, given the odor issues, particularly in a residential neighborhood. There are other issues as well. And so we'd like to have six months to work through any regulations that should be put in place. We would come back, I think the date in the resolutions, August 11th, with a work plan and a public hearing as required by law for adopting a moratorium.
Steve, do you feel that the current code that we passed that already prohibits any kind of grow operations within city limits is not sufficient?
Right, because this is under the medical program, which is not, we have not defined that in our current codes, our current zoning codes. We defined it under the recreational marijuana statutes.
So had we said recreational and medical, we would have covered them both.
Right. And at that time, because of the way the laws were being, the progression, it was advised that we used, that local agencies stay away from the medical marijuana issue until the state had developed a program. Now they've got a program or a law for it.
And that's a little different situation. We did that by a license, like a business license, because it's a sales issue. And here, these people can't sell their marijuana. They're growing this just for medical, personal medical use.
So this would be basically unlicensed then? There's no business license to come in and say, as long as you have a medical marijuana, whatever, you just go grow?
Right. They have to have their medical license or medical permit or whatever they call it.
That's not a local permit. That's not one that we issue.
State permit, right.
Right. And what company, a company's, our business license is a regulation in our zoning code, which it defines retailer, producer, and processor, and define where you can do that in the city. So this doesn't fall with any of those three definitions.
And we are, just from a practical standpoint, having issues with some people who are processing, who perhaps, or we think are processing, that perhaps don't have the appropriate licensing and/or the appropriate equipment. And so there's becoming some orders and issues with those that are processing under our current zone or grandfathered in for stuff in Old Station that we're starting to find are becoming a bit of an issue. So I think as we look at this, we're just going to have to be cognizant of the other issues that we have and let planning staff go to work on it and come back with, with, you know, we, the processing has to be done indoors with all the other stuff, but we're still finding issues with that. So we have to, I think this is the right thing to do in terms of, at least on the medical side, make sure we're, at this point, making it so that it can't happen until we figure out what the proper, for our cities.
So at some point, once staff develops a plan, it'll be talked about in a work session?
Probably go through the planning commission. We have to have a public hearing of the moratorium laws. There'll be a more, a public hearing where the public can come and comment in August. And I think the moratorium lasts six months. I would anticipate we'll have regulations ready for you guys to look at. And we should take some comments from you guys based on what staff is talking about in terms of what's allowed in the medical stuff and, you know, over the next, I don't know if we need a work session for that or if the public hearing is fine. What do you think for process? Do you want to, you know, we kind of work sessioned a couple times on the regular marijuana stuff.
I would like to see it in a work session. I think it's very prudent that we're going, potentially going through this process, because what if citizen John Doe is growing it in his backyard? What's there to keep the neighbors from sneaking in and stealing it? What kind of security problems are we going to have? Just...
Well, and you've already brought up the added issues of the odor that aren't being dealt with well.
Yeah, two.
Yeah. And I think, I think we really have a hard time with, the code says odor's an issue, so by the time we get there, well, there's no odor. You know, I mean, that comes and goes. And so it's like, it's tough to enforce. And we're putting our code enforcement people in a tough spot. And so I, I think this makes sense until we figure out exactly what you guys want.
Some kind of nuisance clause in there or something.
Yep.
Well, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance Number 2016-13, adopting a six-month moratorium within the city of Wenatchee on establishment, signing location permitting licensing or operation of medical marijuana cooperatives as authorized under RCW 69.51A.250.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Poyer. Second by Councilmember Harold to adopt ordinance 2016-13, adopting a six-month moratorium on medical marijuana cooperatives. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For the record, four in favor, zero against. Limited English proficiency plan. Brooklyn.
Hi. Brooklyn Holton Housing Community Planner for the city of Wenatchee. This is a limited English proficiency plan, and it is a result of a Fair Housing Audit that was conducted in 2013. And it was, it's a HUD, so the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development has strongly recommended that we have a process put in place to know what documents should be translated, what types of communication or events need to be enabled with an interpreter, how do we allow, or what are different processes for those that might come in contact with a limited English proficiency individual on a regular basis? How do we make sure that that communication is open and appropriate for administering programs and policies to those individuals? So this plan is a, essentially, a overarching guideline on different recommendations on how, how to do that and different approaches that you can take. It is something that can guide the development of a language access plan, which the Diversity Council has shown great interest in being a part of the development and implementation of that. So this plan, essentially, the LEP plan gives, there's a four-factor analysis that you'll find in it, and it helps to identify what populations should we consider for LEP individuals, as well as what types of approaches? What are the costs in order to, to carry out this plan? And then the LAP, LAP plan that can be developed will be the implementation side. That, the, the group that works on that will determine what's the best approach and how best should we train our employees? What level should the employees be trained on? And also, how do we coordinate and partner with sub recipients and other community members on providing this service? That's the plan.
So this is something that's required by HUD that we adopt?
Yes. Yeah.
And if we don't adopt it, do they turn off the federal spigot of money?
Yeah, we don't want to do that.
Well, and Brooklyn also reviewed the plan with the Diversity Council and asked for their input and recommendations on it. And it did significant review with staff on the overriding plan as well.
A lot of details in there.
There are a lot, yeah. And some of it, when you read it, is, seems really general and kind of not, not direct on what we need to do. And a lot of the verbiage that HUD provides is, to extent, feasible or, you know, kind of lets you decide a lot. And so that's where the implementation side, the LAP plan, will really help with us knowing what's our approach, what's the process that we're going to do for different programs, what documents do we know should really be translated. And so that'll be more of a specific and, and less HUD federal verbiage will be in that, in that one, so...
Great. Thanks, Brooklyn. Any questions for Brooklyn? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2016-32, establishing a limited English proficiency LEP plan to guide the city in development of a language access plan, LAP.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Harold. Second by Councilmember Poyer to adopt Resolution 2016-32, establishing a limited English proficiency plan for the city of Wenatchee. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brooklyn. Homeless grant changes. Is Sandra doing it? Looks a little bit like Steve.
Sorry to disappoint you.
Oh, you're never disappointing.
So we had, last year, you may recall, that the consolidated homeless grants funding got cut quite a bit at the, from the state. And of course, we administer those funds on behalf of, on behalf of Shalane and Douglas County for homeless programs such as rent assistance and shelters and, and housing needs. So they just, Department of Commerce just came out with an amendment to the funding, and basically, it's good news. We've got a significant increase. It's even better news than your council gender report includes. And so I have some revised numbers here, and I'll give this to Tammy when it's done. Did you get the revised one from Sandra? Okay. Does the council have it or?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. So the, the very right lower hand number is 625,000?
Yes.
Okay. So yeah, a significant bump in our funding. And so we're just requesting a, or asking for a authorization for the mayor to sign an amendment with Department of Commerce for this funding. And then we are currently out with a request for applications for this funding for, from the service providers, so we can distribute it out. We have until July 1 of 2017 to spend this, these funds.
Have we talked specifically about the city's desire to try to do something along the lines of the homelessness stuff that, when the gentleman came from
Housing First?
Housing First model?
Lloyd Pendleton stuff?
Are we going to focus a majority of that on something that's similar to a Housing First model? What have we talked about?
So this isn't a whole lot of money. So the question will be, and we've put it out as top priority, is permanent support of housing. So it'll be interesting to see what the service providers propose to us. And if it's not something that comes back, we always have the option of, of trying something different. But yeah, we've made that known, that that's priority.
So they will submit proposals to you and...
So it is interesting. Originally, the increase was only 91,000. Now we're up to, what is it, 212,000, which is, 91,000 is a whole lot different number than 212,000, so...
That's great.
I think your point is, well, I think you're making a good point, that we should probably put a notice out to all the applicants that that's actually enough money to do something.
Right.
Well, and the part that we were playing is we've got the RFP out for the housing market study, and we were going to look to this to help supplement the cost of that housing market study. That was going to look at the market demand for the permanent support of housing all the way up to the market rate and kind of identify our housing crisis from end to end. So that's a piece of this that will help build toward the Lloyd Pendleton model.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions for Mr. King? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I make a motion to adopt 2016 consolidated homeless grant changes. Uh, sir, I'm very sorry. I make a motion for the city council to authorize the mayor to enter into the amended CHG agreement with the Department of Commerce.
Second.
And motion by Councilmember Huffaker. Second by Councilmember Koulas to authorize the mayor's signature on the amended CHG agreement with Department of Commerce, regardless regarding her homelessness funding.
And I apologize, I do have one question.
Mm-hmm.
And looking at the, at the dates that are proposed here, steering committee meeting on the 27th, so that's roughly a month from now, are enough time for people to put together proposals and for that steering committee to sort through that?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we think so. We prepared a very streamlined application. Normally, this is a million dollars, this application process. So we created a streamline for, for this smaller amount of funding. But yeah.
All right. Any other questions? So we have a motion, a second, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a public hearing item. For public hearing items, we will hear from staff first. Council will ask any questions they have of staff, then we'll turn over the public for any comments they wish to make, and then we turn it back over to the council for any action they'd be willing to take. This is regarding the CDBG Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or CAPR. Brooklyn.
Yeah. Brooklyn Holton Housing Community Planner for the city of Wenatchee. Can you guys see it?
Yep.
So, oh, I'll just go back. The Community Development Block Grant is, we're an entitlement community, so we get this money every year, and it starts on April 1st, and the program year ends on March 31st. And from, we started receiving funding in 2005, and all the way up to 2014, we progressively reduced the amount, and over time, we, it reduced about $187,000. And so that's been a real hit, but starting in 2014, it actually started slowly going up. And so this year, actually in 2016, we got 205,608. So we're just under $10,000 in increase over the last three years of receiving. So that's a good trend that we'd like to keep seeing. So far, our projects have been in line with the 2013 to 2017 consolidated plan. And then we have an annual action plan, which was reviewed, I believe, in February for the projects we're going to do. And this CAPR is a recap of what was done in the program year. So for the 2015 year, our main goals and strategies are to preserve and improve neighborhoods, support public services, and reduce homelessness. Our biggest projects are capital improvements, which has been the Shalane Avenue sidewalk project, the code enforcement efforts, which I'll kind of talk about later, but that includes a, an educational component, volunteer agreement, resources, and then also helping to provide funding for the salary of code enforcement staff. And then the Neighborhood Improvement Grant, which just recently, you guys approved to the program guidelines to supplement that with the general fund money. And the public services, literacy and ESL training, that's been kind of our main focus for public services. And then the referral and debris removal services, that's for, like dumpsters, to do cleanup with coordination with volunteers around the city. And the city recycling event, which you guys saw a presentation for, I think, two weeks ago from Cliff and Steve. And then for the reduced homelessness, we actually align our goals with the homeless, the consolidated homeless plan. And then, so our target area is considered the south central Wenatchee core. And just, so the outline in yellow is the area that we mainly target. And so when we look at census data, that area, when you accumulate the incomes, is considered the majority to be low to moderate income individuals. So for funding in 2015, HUD gave us 200,299. And we had some rollover mainly for that Shalane Avenue project, but then also from the neighborhood grant, we had some. We had just over, under $40,000 that wasn't spent. That was still, we were coordinating with our design analysis team consultants. And so their contract was continuing through this year. So in 2015, we allocated just over $310,000. And there's a 20% cap on admin and planning, and so, and then 15% on public services. So that first one, that 40,059 is the max that we were allowed to spend on that. And then the 27,500 about, and 2500 added together was the max that we're allowed to spend on public services. The code enforcement officer, that's part of that salary. And then the neighborhood grants program, that was the rollover from the previous year. And the Shalane Avenue project, which has been an ongoing project for the last couple of years and hopefully into the next as well. So these were the actual expenditures that we had, based on what was allocated. Our program admin, that was below what we needed to spend. And so that money can actually be rolled over into the next year for other projects. The neighborhood grants program, we had a project that was to help fill a gap in a sidewalk, and the process of working with contractors took too long and went into winter, so we rolled that funding over to work on that again this year. And then the code enforcement referral and debris removal program, which was combined with the cleanup event, that was, the cleanup event was able to supply its own funding with the metal scraps and things that came in. And then we actually were able to partner with waste management on some of our free dumpsters, and so they, we didn't have a charge, which we had had the previous year. So we got to use that extra funding and roll it over into what will be 2016. And then, these are some accomplishments. So code enforcement at the cleanup in April 18, 2015, last year. Seven partners, 15 volunteers, aside from city staff that were there. Compared to the presentation we talked about weeks ago, these numbers were a little bit lower. So we actually did more cleanup this year than last year. But 2,000 tires, seven half tons of scrap metal, one full truck of electronics. And the pre, in 2014, we only had one small van, so that was a big increase. And then 20 batteries. And code enforcement, just within that yellow outline target area, we had 354 cases, which was approximately 1,107 hours of our code enforcement officer just in that target area. We provide dump vouchers, so that individuals can take dump, to bring, bring debris to the waste management site. And so that's a value of $20 minimum each, because that's the base pay that they need to do. For the literacy council, they helped out 176 extremely low or low-income individuals, the majority of them being Hispanic. And this was actually quite a bit, large decrease from last year. They've been trying to figure out how they can do outreach into the, into the orchards. And so they're trying different techniques to be able to go out and reach beyond just individuals coming into the community center. So I think that's, but it's more difficult to reflect the numbers because there's hesitation in some paperwork that they would have to fill out. So that's something that we're trying to figure out and be able to coordinate, so that we can get a greater accurate snapshot of, of the individuals that are actually being served with this service. Shalane Avenue, so these are just two pictures. That was the finished product. I think many of you got to be at the ribbon cutting, which is a wonderful ceremony. And I think Steve mentioned that that's one of the most attended ribbon cuttings that he's been a part of, so that was wonderful. We had about nine community members attend as well, from around the area. And then the picture on the right is just one of the art parties where we utilized community involvement to help design the art that went on the metal banners, as well as the stamped concrete. So that project had lighting, sidewalk, public art, landscaping, which is the rocks on, by that grassy knoll in the lower left-hand photo, and then road channelization, so one-way to two-way. So for 2016, we received 2,500, $205,608. And so we will be allocating that towards the same programs that we did last year. We'll be working on phase two and hopefully three of the Shalane Avenue project. And then also working on expanding that neighborhood grant with the supplementation of the general fund. And any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
How do we get the money?
So we're just an entitlement community, which means, so HUD has different, kind of, can't think of the word, requirements to be an entitlement community. And so a lot of it's based on population. And if you're a large enough city or a large metropolitan area for, for your region, you automatically get funding based on what their federal budget is.
So we didn't do anything wrong by losing 40% of the money?
No.
Okay.
No, that wasn't a reflection on our performance. That's just on what their budget displayed, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And they just write us one check, right? And then we have to spend it in accordance with their guidelines and these...
Yeah, and essentially, so they have the funding, and we have a system where we go in, and once we know our projects and we spend our funding, we do a drawdown, and they will provide that reimbursement as these projects completes.
And you're not asking for us to have, adopt anything tonight or pass anything? This is just an annual review?
Yeah, and the public, we have to, we're required to public hearings at a minimum, and so this can satisfy, the annual action plan satisfies one, and this satisfies another one. So we have that minimum two covered every year for the program.
And how long till we get to do another sidewalk project down in the south Wenatchee area? It's going to take a while at $90,000 a year, fifty, whatever, to build up enough to do, right?
We're currently waiting on a scope from RH2 on what the rest of that, because they did some preliminary design analysis during that first phase, and so we're waiting... And so we're waiting on some information for the next two phases on what that cost will look like. And then depending on that, we will look at what options there are for borrowing ahead on CDBG. And so that's an option. You can borrow up to a certain amount or percentage of your annual award. And then just kind of repay back that as the, as awards come in. So essentially, we could do projects ahead of time and then just not have a certain amount of allocation for the next couple of years through this program.
The goal is to build next year, design this, this fall.
Yeah.
Under the buy ahead program?
Yeah.
Okay.
Could you go back to the, display the map of the eligible areas for block grant funds? Where a few years ago, you might remember, we bumped out and we added that central part in there. And besides the south end being kind of somewhat deficient in sidewalks, we have some deficiencies in that area as well.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That we'll want to, we'll want to take a look at because they include routes to schools.
Right.
And shopping for folks that have mobility issues.
Yeah, and I think in, we have a work session coming up to kind of look at this and different sidewalk programs in areas, along with the pedestrian master plan that I'm doing as part of the 1422 grant. So I think all of that we'll be able to include.
Yeah, places that are not in the block grant program that stay in sidewalks. You can't neglect those.
Right, and funding, this is a priority. And at, in about a year, we'll have to redo our consolidated plan. And that's an opportunity also to look at and evaluate and ensure that what, where our focus is at is, is all inclusive of the areas that really do need this funding.
Yeah.
That's great.
All right, any other questions for Brooklyn? If not, I will turn it over to any member of the public that would like to address the council on this particular item. Seeing no takers, then we will conclude this public hearing. All right, discussion, we have a little plan for some tourism discussion. Allison, you want to tee this up for us?
Sure. So in your packet I handed out, Allison. So the, as you will recall, the lodging tax advisory committee and the tourism promotion area have had a joint committee that has been exploring the operation of those advisory boards to city council to talk about three potential futures for them. Do they maintain operating independently? Do they exchange members so that there's more sharing of information, which would require a change to their incorporating resolutions? Or do they, they merge? And so they have been marching through that process and doing a lot of work to understand what each of the boards does. And they're looking to the lodging tax advisory committee as the oversight committee. It is the committee that's established in state statute, most recently defined by the application process that we do. The tourism promotion area was established in 2006. And RCW 35101 establishes the legislative authority, has the ability to direct how that fund is administered. And so, you know, the purposes are listed there for you. The tourism promotion area, those are dollars that are intended to help with the advertising, publicizing, and distributing information for the purpose of attracting and welcoming tourists. And lodging tax advisory committee, the uses are broader in that it can do capital projects or assist with either publicly or nonprofit owned capital facilities, as well as marketing and tourism infrastructure. And so tomorrow morning, the two committees are meeting together. They have said that they want to have an understanding and an overall purpose statement, vision statement for the use and investment of both funds, so that that will guide their working together. And one of the questions on their mind has been city council desires and city council input into the process for the investment of these funds. So wanted to present this to you tonight to see if you have input or guidance for them as they enter into this process tomorrow, which will be with the facilitator, who will be working with them to come up with a purpose statement.
My question is more to do with the, because the funds are to be used differently, does that mean if they were to combine, that you would have two different budgets and you would have to keep track of both, or?
Statutorily, it would be, a great example is how we do our homeless funds. So we have different pots of funds that we allocate through one process. Each set of funds has their own specific statutes and each specific budget item for how those funds can be used. And so they receive numerous applications. And as they go through that process, we look to Sandra Van Austin, who does an awesome job of defining where each of those projects can fit within the funding available. So this would have those same similarities.
Are there applications that end up in front of, I'll get this wrong, the lodging tax advisory committee that probably should be in front of the TPA because of its eligibility? Or stuff that maybe LTAC doesn't fund that TPA could? If they were one board and one, looking at it as one, that they could then?
Yes.
Move some dollars around or change the applications where they would fit?
Yes, it is, it has happened in the past application processes, that there have been applications that have been received by the LTAC that are eligible for tourism promotion area funds. And those applications were forwarded along to the tourism promotion area board. In their minds, they have very specific charges. The tourism promotion area really gets into the nuts and bolts of the annual marketing plan and works closely with the chamber on the allocation of those dollars for specific ad buys. They consider themselves lean and mean and in the trenches. The lodging tax advisory committee, they see more as the overarching board that looks to the, the bigger picture of tourism and ensuring that our larger pot of funds that are generated through hotel motel tax are invested in those items that are critical to maintain the tourism infrastructure. But also a big piece of that is the portion that is carved out for the chamber contract.
And could you have one board that handles both of those?
Conceivably, you could. The, the tourism promotion area could be a committee of the lodging tax advisory committee. And so that's what they're currently exploring is how should we function together? Could we, do we want to recommend that?
Currently separate boards, separate meetings, separate pots of money?
Correct.
One of the possibilities is a reconfiguration of what we now call lodging tax advisory committee to have seats for that. I guess the other configuration would be a representative that would also say be chair, a subcommittee of that to fold that in there. When Allison and I spoke about tourism goals, I was probably, I, I'm all about brevity. And I said, the tourism goal is money. It's revenue for our businesses and revenue for our hotels and revenue for us. More conventions, we're, we're a convention community. And more fun for the people who come here. It's money. I'm kind of tired of saying heads and beds. I mean, it sounds cute, but it's, it's revenue. It's revenue and fun.
It's not just revenue for the hotels. It is revenue for everyone because all of that flows through the community.
Including the government agencies that have to support the influx of population that comes in, whether it be law enforcement, firefighting, water, sewer, streets, et cetera.
And I think from, from the city's standpoint, we have a couple of, the convention center is a primary user of the lodging tax funds. So in terms of guidance from the council, when we come up with a purpose statement, ensuring the continued investment in that facility would be one of the things that we would talk about.
But clearly, TPA money can't be spent on the facility.
Right.
But LTAC money can.
It can be spent to market the facility.
Right. But not in the facility.
Right.
Not in the physical plan improvements that we've been making.
It's, the TPA money is strictly marketing.
And so who best then to spend our marketing dollars? An individual group like the TPA or something under the lodging tax advisory committee where we're working together on?
And I think for tomorrow's discussion, they're just wanting to understand from your perspective, how you want to see the dollars used. And then they're working through the process to look at the ultimate organization and provide a recommendation to, back to you.
So when you say how, on specific projects or?
What's important to you?
Focus, focus strategy. Where, where we want to look at. And then I think the, the groups can come up with a model for that. What, what's, what should be our areas of focus when it comes to spending for tourism dollars?
So I've said for a while, and goes back to when we put the $3 million or four, how much money we just put into the convention center, the convention center and then the chamber for our destination marketing, or for that, yeah, whatever. I mean, to me, those are the two biggies. And, you know, we put a 15-year bond together on assets that will last probably eight or nine years.
Right.
And what we got handed, you know, two years ago when we did this, you know, the refinancing, we had a million dollars of debt on the last remodel. And I don't want to leave that to the next, because, you know, in another seven, eight years, it's going to need more money. And I want that debt paid for. I want those improvements off the books, which means an additional commitment either from lodging tax funds or general fund money to help get us to a point that the next council doesn't have to do what we did. And, and so to me, those are the two biggest. And then kind of everything else kind of falls out of what's left there. I don't know how much goes into, you know, and maybe we wait until we get what looks like two additional hotels. You know, obviously the one that we've got in Old Station and then the one on the waterfront. Do we have any, I mean, you're, you're thinking we're going, we're at a million four right now between the two, you think we'll get to $2 million?
Danced in some preliminary numbers and believes that between the two pots of funds we'll be close to that.
The 6% of the dollar, okay.
I have a concern that we're just maybe slicing the pie a little thinner. That's my only concern. And I know that when you put it together, you took that into consideration.
So describe slicing the pie thinner.
Are we just splitting up the business more? Is it going to bring any new increased business here? Having two new hotels. It should help, it should help with conventions. I really believe it will because it'll enable us to attract those groups that will not come here because we don't have enough hotel rooms right next to the convention center. But.
Well, clearly, the one in Old Station will be new because that's been there for a while. So that's already, if there was any sort of infiltration amongst the other ones, that's already taken place. So it's the new one on the waterfront that if you think there might be some displacement that happens.
And it's interesting, and part of the investment in the funds in the last year has been the tourism study and the, the exit study that's been done of people coming to events here that has been funded with LTAC funds through the chamber. And new hotel inventory is a priority of the people who are visiting here. They have a hard time finding rooms here at our peak times, and they're looking for different opportunities. So it will actually enhance our tourism effort.
I'm glad to hear that.
So I guess my thought is those are the two places where I would, and then I don't want to say peanut butter, but as, as things come up.
We have, the lodging tax advisory committee has been functioning for about four years now.
2013?
Yeah. And we have seen in the applications requesting funds, we've seen some interesting, innovative, and nice ideas, many which we did not fund because they didn't quite fit.
Right.
Our pattern, but you know, things from, remember we had someone that was going to do an app? There's an app for that. And then we get event, event ones, but still, the, the, at the top of, well, at the base of the pyramid is the contract for destination tourism marketing and the convention center. In the end, that's where, and that's, I don't want to say that the LTAC intentionally focuses that way, but that's where, where we've focused. And the other stuff has been kind of part with recommendations from our committee and our marketing, tourism marketing, the, maybe the add-on event type things that we support that we can see bring things into the community. But really, it's, 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 it's been the convention center and the marketing. And the marketing is working.
I, I would just like to say, I think the chamber has done an excellent job. And I know TPA contracts with the chamber to help administer those funds. They've done an excellent job of marketing the community. I really like the route they're going down. It's, it's been well done.
All of the reports we get are growth at, at some level. And the, and the quarters that aren't so good are the quarters like, well, gee, there's no snow at Mission Ridge. Not anything we can do about. We've seen a steady increase, I believe, in our convention business as the economy's improved and, and our convention center's nicer.
Yeah, we spent some money down there. And that's the part that I think we have to continue. Matt Leonard's got a laundry list of things he'd like to do down there. So I, I agree with you. Those are the, the two base things that we have to continue to, and I just want to make sure that we, and I'm, I don't like debt, so I want that stuff paid off.
Well, and like you said, you know, we don't want to be in a spot like, you know, we're still paying for the King Dome and it was imploded 20 years ago. No, that's, no.
I'd like to change it, a subject just for a second, because the tourism, I, I just would want to make sure if these merged, or whatever word we want to use, that tourism gets their say, which I understand, I know it's allocated money for them. And it is true, like Allison said, they're a lean, mean machine. They, they get a dollar, they know where that dollar's going to go.
On the TPA side?
Yeah, it makes me feel, I got to tell you, it makes me feel really good inside. I like that. And so if it.
You don't like it when the government wastes money?
Yeah. But the, but, but it's hard for, I know it's a smaller number, but it's hard for control. And it's, it's hard for that control, to lose that control. And I guess I'd like to see something, if it, if it came together, that we see this togetherness more, maybe like we're looking at the same direction, I guess. And I understand LTAC, we got, we got to take care of that, these things. And the, the money has to be designated for this. But maybe we can save money on something and we see a bigger picture if we group together. Boy, we can buy advertising half the price because now we can group it, we got a bigger budget. I don't know how this would work, but I think there's, there's got to be solutions to where the tourism actually benefits more so. They need to see, see something in it for them. And, and I just would, I really, I'm promoting. I want them to see, see what the value is, like.
But you sit on TPA right now?
Yeah.
And you sit on LTAC, okay.
And it makes no sense to, it makes little sense to even by appearances have a structure that doesn't rely very heavily on the participants in the TPA, because it's their voluntary dollar.
Yeah.
It's, you know, we don't want to take someone's, right? We don't want to be in a, have it look like someone else is deciding what the hoteliers would like to do. That, that focus, that line of communication has to be very solid in any document that we talked about consolidation, we have to be very clear, the role of, of the hoteliers who contribute to that, to that voluntarily contribute to that.
And make the tourism board feel better. Because that's, because you're right, we want to, we want that clarification.
Allison, if you were to merge these two groups, would you increase the number on your board to include more hotel people?
Well, so the, the lodging tax advisory committee is the one committee that's statutorily required. And it is prescriptive in terms of the number of hoteliers, the number of people who generate the tax being equal to the number of people who can potentially use the tax. So currently, the way we're structured is we have an eight-member board and we have two hotel positions, two generators and four at-large. And so we can change that makeup. I mean, if you were to merge, we, we also have a stipulation that members of one board cannot be the members of the other board. So there's, there was, there's this separation now. I think, you know, as you move for the, for, through, for the, through the process, and if this becomes a recommendation, I think you would want to relook at that. And you may, you may want to make it four and four, four hotels and four generators and just make it true to the, you could lessen the board, you could increase it, but it just has to be equal.
Yeah, and we have two.
And that has to be by state law.
Two, two citizen members at present.
I just want, want to make sure that.
Yeah.
There is more hotel people on that board. Even if you have to increase the other, that would be fine too. But this is a self-imposed tax that they have put on themselves.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's the one advantage of keeping TPA separate is because.
And that's, and that's the one advantage of keeping TPA separate is because they have a bigger percentage of hoteliers there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like what they're doing in TPA. I think, I think they are just, it's like you said, they're lean and mean, but they're doing an excellent job of using those marketing dollars and it is very limited.
Yeah, and, and let's remember, it's not a foregone conclusion that there's gonna be a merger.
Right.
Right.
But we need to have the discussion though and, and figure out what are the, the advantages and, and the disadvantages and ultimately...
Yeah, well, I think it's wise to have this discussion.
Yeah, and tomorrow morning's a great step because it was the intention to get both the boards together and to come up with a joint purpose statement. So it's a specifically facilitated process, third-party facilitator, where they all share their ideas and come up with a, a joint statement. So I think that's a great first step.
One thing that I think needs to be looked at a little stronger and you kinda touched on the event, the idea of events, the events that we have here bring in a lot of dollars. You look at Triple Crown baseball tournaments coming in, you look at Special Olympics. Too often, a lot of those events are colliding at the same time and that actually puts the strain on the hotel space availability. Somehow, that needs to be coordinated a little bit better so that we can maybe stagger those events. I don't know whose hat that would fall under, but that's something that should be discussed.
I know that then...
To have some kind of an event coordinator for the city.
Well, I know that it is a, an activity that's going on with our contract with the chamber, so they have the sports council and the chamber and so they do their very best to help coordinate those, even with the convention center, to try to offer other weekends. We're a busy place, we, hotel capacity will help us tremendously. Yeah, they're, they're, they're actually complimentary events and they're colliding because of our lack of hotel room space.
She's right, and I know like during Triple Crown, we can't even sell a convention because we can't get hotel rooms.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and Triple Crown would get bigger, they would bring in more teams if we had more hotels.
Absolutely, absolutely. I think the sports council works really hard to work around that and we try to work with the chamber too, as far as conventions.
There's been at least two or three years where there was either soccer events going on at the same time as Triple Crown. People were staying in Yakima.
Yeah, mm-hmm, yeah. Need our hotel rooms, yeah. So this is great, a great update for you guys in terms of our process that we're in and then wanting to get your input for tomorrow and hopefully you two are planning to be there tomorrow morning?
Night eleven.
Okay, thank you, Allison.
You're welcome.
Mayor's report. Not sure what's your report. Drove to Everett today to, with Allison and Tammy to give, Ethan Toth has, gotta give a little speech with the six other recipients of the thousand-dollar AWC scholarships. That was great to see Ethan, what a great kid. And of course, he made me look like he should. He absolutely rock-starred his little two-minute speech and I was pretty much awful introducing him, so he made the city look really good today. So that was really nice to do that and glad we went over. Made for a bit of a long day, I don't go over and back quite as well as I used to, but made that happen. We got a couple of Thursdays off. I know we're working real hard on lots of stuff. I mean, I can't even begin to start on, on where we're at. So we will have an exact session next time we meet to talk about real estate matters and I think most of it, you know, we kinda know kinda what's going on. So Allison, what else is kinda happening in the next couple of weeks?
Yeah, I think those are the big things, are, the July fourteenth meeting will be a very busy meeting, so pulling together a lot of the details for those. That's the big...
Well, let's not forget to have a blast on July fourth. And the independent state committee is still fundraising and we'll be at the farmer's market this weekend. If you have a spare twenty-dollar bill or so that you're not gonna buy and spend on consumer fireworks, drop it in one of the containers and, and enjoy the family celebration on the fourth.
And let's hope we don't have any sort of fires like we had. I think this is the one-year anniversary sometime this week of the Broadview stuff. So I know we had some rain last weekend, but then there was a fire out in, you know, a couple of different, we've dodged a couple bullets so far, so let's keep our fingers crossed that we don't have to go down that path again. Anybody else have anything for the good of the order? If not...
We probably should say, you are on the Our Valley What's Next Action team?
Yes.
You had a meeting last night, you're looking at game changer projects?
Yeah, so there's nineteen of us, but Our Valley What's Next has nineteen folks on, what do they call it?
Think tank.
Think tank. So we started thinking last night. We will go through a lot of the big game changers and see what we come up with. The one thing that was discussed the most last night was this One City concept, you know, at a thirty-thousand-foot level, there's gonna be a number of other concepts that are brought up. And I think the idea is, is try to get to one or two that are maybe doable in the next three to five years and tackle them, but the think tank's supposed to agree on what that might look like. So I have been doing a lot of talking about our housing issues. You'll see something in the newspaper, I'm assuming in the next couple of days. Just, I'll tell you a little story, so I was at, I'm on the board of Confluence Health and so I was in four hours of meetings yesterday. And occasionally, Confluence Health goes on what's called diversion, which their beds are full and so they can't take anybody else, so if you come in sick, they have to send you off to other places. Doesn't happen often, but it does happen on occasion, you know, during very busy times, flu seasons, there's just times when it happens. Well, it happened yesterday and we had ten available beds. The reason it happened is we don't have any nurses. The reason we don't have any nurses is because we don't have the housing for them. They come in, they look for a couple of days, they can't find a house and they leave. So this housing issue that we're having around here, whether you call it workforce housing, affordable housing, housing for homeless, housing for wealthy people, I don't care what you call it, is really starting to affect our community in that we just can't bring in the kinds of people. We have the employment base here. I think Confluence on the, right now, has got about a hundred and thirty jobs out there, right? Physician types, all kinds of stuff, and we just can't find places for people to live. And they're having that problem in Shalan and Kashmir and Leavenworth and Wenatchee and so, you know, we're still trying to talk about, you know, what we can do to help with that, but it's becoming, I think, more of a problem than we might realize, those of us that have homes and places to stay and, and have employment, those that are trying to hire. It's really difficult right now to find a place for these people to live. So I don't know what the right answer is. I've talked to the port about it, I think we'll be talking with the PUD about it, but it's something that we really have to try to get our hands around. And we're meeting with developers and, and doing what we can to get excitement here, but it's becoming more of an issue than I think one might wanna, to, to think about. So I've been pushing pretty hard on that particular item in the last couple of weeks. Allison, anything else?
Nothing, I think I'm busy.
All right, so we got two weeks off. Have a happy fourth and we'll see you on the fourteenth, is that the day?
Yes.
Excellent, we're adjourned.